Boy Scouts, proceed.
Color guard, attention. Color guard, board march. Ready, halt. Prepare to post the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Salute. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Please remain standing for the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so gauding we hailed as the twilight's last gleaming? Whose cross-strikes and bright stars through the perilous skies? For the ramparts we watched were so gallant we streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the humps' purring air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-stangled banner yet wave? For the flag of the free, oh, the free! And the home of the brave, home of the brave!
Color guard, dismissed. Audience, may we see you.
Thank you. On behalf of the city, I'd like to thank the Boy Scout Troop 38 for presenting the flag and for the Main Street Singers for coming and singing with us today. Let's give them a round of applause. Let the record show, the councilors are here, except Counselor Campos, who's vacated his seat because he moved to Monmouth, so there is a big -- because he has a bigger house for his family. And Counselor Lindskog is now with us tonight. Folks, councilmembers, do you have the minutes that are in front of you? Do they meet with your approval? That's a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I think our city recorder has the next part of the agenda.
It takes a whole team.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John McCartl, say a no.
Aye, John McCartl, say a no.
That I will support the Constitution and laws
That I will support the Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
The State of Oregon
State of Oregon
And the Charter and Ordinances
And the Charter and Ordinances
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
And that I will perform the duties
And that I will perform the duties
Of the Office of Mayor
Of the Office of Mayor
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Press for Kayla Cocaine. Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Shannon Cocaine, say a no.
I, Shannon Cocaine, say a no.
That I will support the Constitution and laws
That I will support the Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
The State of Oregon
The State of Oregon
And the Charter and Ordinances
And the Charter and Ordinances
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
City of Independence, Oregon
And that I will perform the duties
And that I will perform the duties
Of the Office of City Councilor
Of the Office of City Councilor
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Come on down.
Counselor Morton? Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Marilyn Morton, say a no.
I, Marilyn Morton, say a no.
That I will support the Constitution and laws
That I will support the Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
The State of Oregon
The State of Oregon
And the Charter and Ordinances
And the Charter and Ordinances
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
And that I will perform the duties
And that I will perform the duties
Of the Office of City Councilor
Of the Office of City Councilor
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
So help me God. Congratulations. Press for Takers.
I'm Tom Takers, say a no.
I'm Tom Takers, say a no.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws
And I will support the Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
The State of Oregon
The State of Oregon
And the Charter and Ordinances
Charter and Ordinances
Of the City of Independence, Oregon
City of Independence, Oregon
And that I will perform the duties
And I will perform the duties
Of the Office of City Councilor
Office of City Councilor
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. We need to elect a council president. Who wants to do it? Marilyn Morton's been the sitting.
I'd move to reelect Counselor Morton as a city president.
And I'm happy.
As council president.
I don't want that one.
Was that a second?
Yes.
I have a motion second. Is there a discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have two resolutions in front of us that I would recommend approval, recognizing outgoing council members. If someone would care to suggest action, please.
I would move to approve Resolution Number 191497, commending Counselor Lindskog. Can I roll those together?
Yes.
And also Resolution 191498, commending Counselor Campos Santos.
And I heartily second that.
Thank you. We have motions and seconds now. Is there a discussion? I'm going to just take a moment, because I think this is a -- I'm not going to miss this opportunity. I just really want to say how much I've appreciated both Diana and Odie, who've helped move our city forward in so many ways. And it's been a pleasure to work with them, some for longer than others. And our community is a better place because of the work that they provided. And for those of you watching on TV or Facebook, just to remind everybody that everybody up here does this as a volunteer. They don't get anything other than the applause that you just gave them a few moments ago. And so I just want to thank them for their service. This is what makes our community and our country a great place, because people are willing to serve like this, so.
May I add one comment on behalf of Diana?
Sure.
We all may have thought she was pretty quiet, but you could -- you should have seen her in the executive sessions.
Are there additional comments that anybody would like to make? So we'll go. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Odie, come up. I have something for you. Believe what I said earlier. I just want you to have this, because this one's open. I hope your kids appreciate it. Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. We'll get Counselor Lindskog her certificate a little bit. So, this is a great way to start a meeting. We're going to declare a recess, because we're -- Actually, what I could do -- yes, we're going to -- I'm going to change the agenda for a second here, and I'm going to take what was a little further down. We're going to swear in a new police officer. And so, we're going to -- let's just do that right now, chief, and then we can go to Cookies.
Mr. Mayor, council, tonight I have the pleasure of introducing our newest officer to you. And for those of you that are keeping track, this would be the replacement for Officer Rumsey. And Officer Rumsey left us to go to the state police. So Trevor Williamson is our new officer, and I'm going to ask him to stand up here so that he can be thoroughly embarrassed while I read about him a little bit. Trevor was hired in mid-December, hasn't been with us long at all. Trevor first started with the Eugene Police Department in June of 2017. He was born in Salem and raised there most of his life. Trevor and his wife Bethany have two boys, Tobias and Barrett. Tobias is two, and Barrett is nine months. He and his family are currently in Harrisburg, but looking for a location nearby to relocate. Prior to law enforcement, Trevor was a claims department employee at SAFE. So that is our newest, and hopefully lasts higher for a while. Trevor actually fills our ranks fully. And he has one week of police academy training and should be solo by April. So that's where we're at with Trevor. If you could get him sworn in, that would be great.
Heaven help me if I go down to the bottom of the packet. Help me out here, folks, do they? Oh, is it in the bottom here? Hold on. Oh, here we go. Thank you. I, Trevor Williamson.
I, Trevor Williamson.
Having been duly appointed by the Chief of Police.
Having been duly appointed by the Chief of Police.
Say a no.
Say a no.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The State of Oregon.
The State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Independence.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Independence.
That I will perform the duties of the office of police officer.
That I will perform the duties of the Office of Police Officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome.
We're going to have the family members come here, because as you heard earlier, it takes a whole team. And so, let's get photos in here. There you go. If you can get up and move around and take these photos. This is small-town America. This is how we get stuff done. You want to -- yeah, I hope you come up too.
Okay, with that, we're going to go to a short recess here for about 10 minutes for punch and Cookies. There are Cookies outside in the foyer. And so, please, take a few minutes and grab some stuff. I know other people have homework and other things that they're trying to get done tonight. So, no need -- you don't have to stay if you don't want to. You're always welcome to come to a council meeting. But we're going to take about a 10, 12-minute break. Without objection, we're in recess. Cookies! Okay, come on, where the heck are we?
I think we are on visitor comment.
Yes, we are.
I'll call in this back into session here. And we're now into visitor comments. Does anybody have any visitor comments they wish to make? I don't see anybody stepping to the microphone for visitor comments. I'm going to go to reports and presentations at this point. We have city council liaison appointments to do. And I have my list here. I have the list.
They have the list.
All right. Let me know what you'd like to do. We have the museum, the library, traffic safety, parks and recreation, historic preservation, Minnet planning, Independence Days, Hop Festival in Winnipeg. So, the museum currently has -- oh, thank you. Okay, there we go. You want to keep going on the museum, Counselor Morton?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Since Counselor Lindskog is not here, who would like to do the library board?
I can take that one also, if you'd like, since I've had only one for the last few years.
Sound okay with everybody? Okay? Tom, do you want to stay on traffic safety?
Yes.
Okay. Parks and Recreation? Somebody help us out here. Sean, when does --
Usually Thursdays, but third Thursday at 1:00 at 6:00.
Oh, I can do that.
You'd like to do that?
I would like to do that.
Okay. That's Martin Willis. Tom, do you want to stay on Historic Preservation?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Hicks, do you want to stay on Minnet?
Sure.
Okay. Did you, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Okay. Shannon, you can jump in anywhere you'd like to. Where was I? Independence Days?
I'd be happy with Independence Days.
That's fine. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hop Festival?
I'd be happy.
Or remember, we have a vacancy, so we can have the new person do it.
I'd be happy to do Hop Festival as well.
Okay. And so, let's leave Winnipeg for the appointed person, okay? Now, just to let you know that lest you think that I am kicking back, I serve on the Middle Lima Valley Council Board of Directors, League of Oregon Cities, and the Mayor and Managers Monthly Meeting at 7:00 a.m. in beautiful downtown Dallas.
Did we include Planning? Are you going to stay on?
Yeah.
I'm going to stay on Planning. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So that's done. Karen, you have all that? Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. We have -- you have a document in front of you, I believe, that has appointing boards and commissions. And under Heritage Museum Advisory Board, Lois Martin does not want to be reappointed, so go ahead and scratch her out. Do you have those in front of you? What I'd like to do is, unless there's objection, let's take this all at once. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
If someone would so move, Counselor Cocaine, would you like to move approval of the as presented?
I would like to move approval for as presented, the list of officers.
Orders and committees, yes. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And now, we have a vacancy in the council. For those of you who have been around for a while, we've filled these a couple different ways. Just to remind everybody, Counselor Odie resigned because he and his family, they moved to Monmouth, and it was a bigger house, and it worked out just right for them. And, you know, that you got to take care of your family the way you think best. We can fill the council position in any way we choose. We've done it several different ways in the last several years. We can make a direct appointment, and in the past, sometimes we've done a direct appointment from a second-place person who ran. We can also do this as a make application, and we can go through a process. We can do it whichever way this council decides to do it. It's open for your folks' discussion.
If Diana would still interested, I would be open to that, considering we just had an election and she was the only other person that's not up here.
She did indicate to me that she would be interested in serving. What do other people think?
I prefer a more inclusive process in going out and soliciting applications, so that we can maybe get somebody who maybe didn't have time or the inclination to go through the election process, but may be interested.
I would agree with that also. I think we should open it up.
Okay, I'm open to both, okay? So, let's do it this way, because it seems like there is no desire to take any action tonight. So what we'll do is we'll open up the process. And how much time do we need to allow?
I mean, we have someone who wants to get turned out. But in the same token, we want to get the seat filled.
How about a -- go ahead.
I was going to say, I'd like to make a decision two meetings out.
And I was going to say, let's have somebody ready to seat by the first meeting in February. So we're saying the same thing.
Does that sound all right?
Does that sound all right with staff? Does that sound reasonable? They're nodding, kind of?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable. We can certainly put together something that would give people time enough to consider getting the applications in.
And we've done this before with an application. And so, when would we want the due date to be? A couple weeks from now? Then we can take a look and try to -- and what we did last time, when we, you know, put in our top two or three, we figured out the -- worked out the details of the process before we actually saw who was in, and go from there. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Does that sound all right for everybody? Karen, does that sound good to you? Using the same form as we used last time. And let's have people turn things in the next couple of weeks, because that should be, you know.
Do you have a preference over the date?
I think we'd like to take
Two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight, and then we can just take -- we can put it, do it as part of our process that evening. Does that sound okay?
So do for the 22nd.
Yeah. Does that sound all right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I neglected to add something to my mayor's report, so if I can, I'm kind of -- I do want to put on your calendars our traditional meeting at the high school. We have that. We were able to get that scheduled. Staff was able to visit with the folks there. And this will be, I think, what is it, 14th or 15th year we've done this? We do that meeting early. It's on -- do I have the correct date? March 12th?
Yes.
Tuesday, March 12th. So instead of 6:30 p.m., it will be 8:30 a.m. at the Central High School Theater. And we'll work -- and they asked us to come earlier than late April, so we're coming in early March before spring vacation. Sound okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yep. 8:30. Because they haven't started school. And please, we're going to -- we'll keep that for a two-hour meeting. We'll adjust. And we'll come up with a question for them to answer. Something on the order of what do you think would make our community a better place? Or what would draw you back? Or something on that. Or it's an opportunity for invited testimony by the senior class. Okay. Is everybody okay with that? All righty. I'm going to move on to our city manager and let him make his report.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did we have an appointment to the planning commission that we were supposed to?
I asked about that.
That was all included in that one?
Yeah, we did it all.
I missed that part.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was a separate deal.
It was in the memo.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did everybody all at once.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Great.
Right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council President, and councilors. Just a few items I'd like to cover tonight. First, the 2040 request for proposals. We received those. We are entering into a selection process. I sent out an email to councilors to see if there was any interest. I've heard back from a couple of you. And so, we'll try to accommodate schedules and work with staff to come up with a going through all the different proposals and determine whether we want to do interviews or whether we have enough information from the proposals to make a determination of who we're going to select for that very important project. So, we're looking to get that done here soon, so we can move forward with that study and engage the community in that conversation. Just a couple of other things. We'll have a homeless initiative agreement. I did execute that. It's an agreement we have with Kaiser, Salem, Polk County, to basically look at the homeless issue. That's $5,000. It's budgeted. And basically, that covers program coordinator costs. They are looking to hire a new program coordinator. Their previous one has moved on. And so, we're working through that process right now to figure out who's going to backfill those shoes and continue to move that program forward. The gate agreement, we brought that up to you a few council meetings ago. I think City Manager David Klein brought that up. And we certainly heard the comments from council. We've gone through a couple iterations of the final agreement. And they actually just emailed me back today, and I think we're really close. We certainly heard the comments about a shorter term, especially for the initial term of the agreement. That was actually something that they wanted as well. So, that was fairly easy to do. So I think we're in good standing there to make that happen, according to the comments that I heard from council. So, that's moving forward. Well, Club de Conversaciono? Conversation, sorry. It's February 7 to 8 p.m. at the library. I know that Ramon is working with the library staff, and so that's going to be a great event if you want to practice your Spanish, which obviously I probably should go.
I think your staff is signaling you in the back here.
February 5th, sorry. I wrote that tone wrong. So, but yeah, so if anybody wants to practice their Spanish, that's a good opportunity to do it. We've heard from some people in downtown area that there's concern over parking. And so, we're kind of working on forming a working group to kind of look at that. That'll include the police department, the Independence Downtown Association, a couple of businesses down there, as well as a number of different staff people. And that's really going to be kind of a high-level conversation, just to kick things off and figure out where we want to go. So, no decisions or anything to move forward, but I want to let you know that that's something that we've heard and is going to be looked at. And probably, hopefully, some recommendations coming forward at some point in the future. The municipal court has an amnesty program, which is going to run from February 1st through June 3rd. So anybody with significant outstanding fines can come in and get, I think, reduced in half. And there's certainly some limitations on that, but it's a great opportunity for people who are just way behind to come in and get their license back or pay their fees as they couldn't in the past. Sunset Meadow Park, open house. I started looking forward to what to do with that park. It's January 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's going to be at the Inspiration Garden at Mountford Park. And so, anybody who wants to attend that and provide input as to how that park will ultimately get put together is invited and is welcome to attend. I did meet with Brant's Recycling. They, if you remember, about six months ago, they put a surcharge in relative to issues with recycling and going on in China. They promised to come back after six months and kind of They promised to come back after six months and kind of let us know how that was working, because they were still trying to just figure out what they thought the appropriate amount to charge was. And after six months, the issue is still there. It hasn't gotten any worse, and the amount that they were charging, which I think was $1.95 per bill, is actually just about covering their costs. So it looks to me, from what the information they gave us, that that's about where they're at. There was no council action to continue that, other than, so it will continue on. But it was something that we promised to come back and let you know about after six months. And certainly, if the situation improves, we'll be keeping that on our radar, so that we can scale that back or get rid of it if the recycling situation changes. Any councilors that want to attend the Midland Valley Council of Governments Annual Meeting and Dinner on February 20th? Let Karen know. She'll coordinate signing you up for that event and getting everything ready for you. So I think the deadline is February 8th, so if you can make sure you get your information here by then. That's going to be a nice evening in Salem to go over that. Just a couple of development things, just to keep you on the loop. Osprey Point, a land decision, I think, was issued today. So they have their site plan review completed. They've also submitted their building plans, so they're well on their way to getting things moved forward there. The Gate has also submitted their land use, and they are planning on submitting their building plans soon, so another nice project there. Marquee Office, they are in the land use process. They've been deemed complete, so they're moving forward with their office project there as well. And then finally, Independence Landing is telling us that they're going to be submitting their site plan application for the Phase 2 and 3, which is the townhomes and apartments, here in the very near future, so we expect that coming in. So lots of work up there in both planning and the building department. But we're able to manage the workflows. I've been talking with them, and it sounds like things are going there. And then finally, as you probably all know, Jubilee has opened in downtown, and it seems to be a great addition, getting a lot of traction there, so.
Great. Questions for the manager?
I have just a couple of comments, if I might. Just in your informal conversations with Brants, it might be, I know a lot of people don't know what's supposed to go in the recycling box. Just, it's confusing now, and I know other locations. Just wanted to pass it on. And for council members, the Cog Dinner is a good opportunity to learn what the Middle Amity Valley Council of Governments, it's an organization, I serve on the board, I'm a past president. It's 43 governments from Polk, Marion, and Yam Hill County, and they've helped our city out quite a bit over the years. It's a strength through folks working together, and they have resources that we can get when we need them. So if you want to attend that, it might be a good information opportunity.
It was really lovely last year, for those that weren't there, so I would anticipate that it would be again. Quick question, please. So the plan that was submitted, that was for Lot 8?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as Brants goes, they have offered to come in and talk to you. It's been a while since they've been in here, not just about recycling, but just about services in general. If you have an interest, let me know, and I'll be happy to invite them to a future council meeting, so.
Is that, yes?
I'd be interested, yeah.
Other people?
Yes.
Okay, we might put that under a chant, you know, maybe a work session or something like that. We'll figure out the details, I'll work with you.
Happy to do that.
Great. Additional questions?
Actually, I have one. Have we given any thought to having maybe a council retreat? I mean, perhaps we need to wait until we have our full council, but our plan's in the works for that.
We haven't started anything on that yet. I was kind of waiting to, like you said, get a full council, and then hear from you as to what you, what month you might want to be looking at to do something like that.
That was, that was what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, as soon as we can, because, you know, get everybody on the same page, and...
Right, and, you know, we want to try to, I'll work with staff, and we'll see, we'll kick around, because I know trying to get a calendar is really important, because I know a number of, I know for myself, I have some work, some weekend work conferences, not conferences, but conflicts that, I need to get things scheduled. So we'll work together on that, does that sound okay?
Great, yeah, thank you, Councilor.
Additional questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think our finance officer gets to be the next person. I think, isn't the, did I miss something? I'm, okay, excuse me.
No, we changed things back, we need to please swear again, so. This will just be fairly brief. So appointing a budget officer and adopting a budget calendar is the next item. So we put in your packet, the proposed calendar. Obviously, that calendar's prepared to meet state laws, and make sure that things get done in expedient manner, so if you have any questions on that, let me know. Other than that, I have requested that Julia, or Gloria be appointed the budget officer for this year. She certainly has much more experience in the budget than I do at this point. I think that's probably a wise move, to appoint her as the budget officer. It's either usually City Manager or the Finance Director.
So this is a required state action that we have to take. If someone would make a motion, I would appreciate it.
I move to adopt the 1920 budget calendar as presented, and to appoint Gloria Bush Finance Director as the budget officer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Congratulations. Okay. Now.
Y'all ready?
Thank you.
Good evening, then.
Good evening. So we have the, to amend our fees, primarily the utility rates. There is a housekeeping item on there. There was a, in the exhibit for the resolution that you adopted last meeting, updating our fee schedule, and those were for the planning fees. There was an item missing on the Exhibit A. It was included in the staff report and everything. It was just missed on the Exhibit A, so we have to go through that process on that. So then down to the water and sewer utility rates. Other than, really don't have anything to add to my memo, other than, I would really like to highlight that we are recommending to, to a, we're recommending that the water rate adjustment be about, be 1% less than what the rate study recommendation was. And that is primarily due to Minnet's performance the last couple of years, and especially this last year, in being able to better meet their debt service. They were less than, they were less than $100,000 below what our budget was last year. So that was, that was significant for our water fund, but, so that's, I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Other than that, if you have any questions.
This reflects what we've discussed before in part of the budget. Are there questions for staff on this matter? Okay, thank you very much.
We do need to...
I was, yes, there is now the opportunity for public comment on the rate, on the fee schedule. Does anybody have anything they'd like to do to talk about the, what is in front of us? I see no one stepping to the podium. Okay, this is an action item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I guess for, before we jump there, and just to clarify for our viewing audience, that we are actually taking a reduced increase in our water fees than we had predicted doing this year.
That's correct. It'll be, we're recommending a 1.5% as opposed to the 2.5% that was recommended in the rate study.
Okay, and then was there a similar lower increase on sewage as well?
No, we are recommending that we go with the, what the rate study recommends on that, and that is because there, for one, there's the covenants with our DEQ funding that we have to maintain a certain level of water, or sewer rates in order to continue to do the projects that are needed.
Right, right.
As well as being able to cover the debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Always appropriate, yeah.
And the debt service on the sewer is for?
It will be with DEQ. For the projects that we're working on now.
Okay, I misunderstood. It sounded like they were two separate things.
Yes, for future set, future debt service.
Okay, if someone would suggest action, I would appreciate it.
I move to adopt Resolution 19-1946, amending the fee schedule for city services and amending community development fees.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. I think you, I think, I think it was 191496.
Excuse me, I was leaving off the 19.
There you go, thank you.
I will amend my motion to include that.
I take it is, where it was, how it was.
Thank you.
And would somebody second?
I'll second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, I think you have another one.
Yes, this one is, now that we have a new city manager, we need to change the signers on the two-bank account, or with the two banks. Amquad Bank has our general checking, and Oregon State Credit Union has a money market and a savings account. This, I see the resolution, though, okay, it does. And there's also the, down in Section 3 addresses our LGIP account, which is Local Government Investment Pool.
And I noticed that in the resolution, it has yours truly as a signature, but I was, but the mayor was not listed in the staff memo.
Okay.
So...
I apologize.
That's okay. It's on the important part. Yeah, it's on the important, right. I just wanted, I just didn't want anybody to think there was anything else there. But yeah, it's just in the resolution. That's okay. I actually do read the package. So this is an action item.
Looking for a motion?
Please.
I would move to approve Resolution Number 191495, bank signatures.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's what we have to do. Are there council announcements at this point?
Yes. There are. First of all, tickets are on sale for two more days only for the Independence Downtown Association Mystery Dinner entitled "What Really Happened to Lenora?" And Lenora is our resident ghost, so-called, so stated, at the Spurling Building. And tickets are through Eventbrite. And also, the voting for the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce Community Awards has just opened. It will, this is round one of the voting. Round two will happen in February, but please get online through the chamber and vote for who you think would be the first citizen, distinguished service, and the businesses of the year, and also educators and junior first citizen.
Additional announcements? Anybody? Okay, let's go home and have dinner. Has somebody moved to adjourn?
Some moved.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.